Okay, it's five o'clock, so I will call to order the February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three Education Operations Committee. President Boucher is not able to attend tonight, so I'll chair the meeting. First up is to, I am seeking a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. A first and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next is public and student comment. And we have none, so we move on then to referendum construction update.
Thank you. Nick isn't able to join us tonight, so our very own Larry Seiler is going to be with us to share some updates at our active construction sites, so how about Larry, I'll give you ultimate control right there.
Okay, um, so our construction updates, fortunately or unfortunately, these pictures were taken last week before snowmageddon. So some of the, um, some of the completion items in here, we're anticipating work happening through that, so we lost a little bit of time, obviously. Statin is the first one up, uh, the exterior masonry is complete, um, the burnished block is in progress. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roughens are, are happening. Uh, ninety percent of the building wall insulated, that's probably more like seventy-five percent, like I said, we lost a few days in there. Um, and the exterior veneer is more like ten percent, they just got a start on it before the snow hit. Uh, structural steel is on site. Any questions on that one? South Mountain, um, much like Statin, we lost a day or two there. Uh, ninety percent of the masonry, so, is complete in section B, so section B being the Turu addition on the south end. Area C, it says twenty percent and it's actually like zero percent, um, the snow hit right at the worst possible time. Uh, mechanical, electrical roughens are, are happening, uh, structural steel is on site. Bearing footings and foundation walls are in progress, I think those are actually done, if, they're not done, they're about ninety-nine percent. Uh, and then the mechanical, electrical, and fire alarm modifications in the existing building are taking place, they are in progress. Questions on that one? Riverview, so the exterior masonry is up, um, mechanical, electrical roughens are happening. The steel is on site, however, the structural steel is still sitting on the ground, it's not sitting on the building again due to the snow. Questions on that one? Okay, the last of them is the Environmental Learning Center. Uh, ninety percent of the footings, ninety-five percent, I'm sorry, of the footings and foundation walls are installed. Uh, seventy-five percent of the building and exterior backfill is completed, that one might be even a little light, I think it's completely backfilled right now. Um, precast planks are over the basement, and unfortunately we eat the snow and rain on those, so the slab beneath them um, has been scheduled and rescheduled, I think, for the third time now, so that slab has not been poured yet. And the exterior cold frame steel wall also hasn't been started yet again. The snow, it keeps fighting us every step of the way. Any questions on the school forest? It's all yours.
One, two slides at once. This is a slide you've seen before, at least the formats, we can talk a little bit less about the format each time, and actually, the numbers that have changed, the East Athletic Phase One green number, the John Muir Middle School green number, and the West Athletics Phase One green number are all numbers that you have seen before and you voted to approve as a board to take it to bid. So their design budgets and they're out to bid right now, I believe, so I put soon in the bid opening, but we don't have a date yet for that bid opening, or I don't have it at least. That last column stays green, once we get to receive bids, we look at how they come in relative to the design budget, and maybe we do a little bit of redesign. Uh, maybe we don't, and if it comes in over a certain threshold, we bring it back to you again, if it comes within ten percent, we don't bring it back to you again, but you'll certainly see it as it updates. The other number of significance is the lower right-hand corner. Uh, you've seen the independent numbers, but you haven't seen them in aggregate, so you haven't seen them in this format. The last time you saw this document, we were under budget, and when we say under budget, we include four point two million dollars of interest earnings. That's just on the one hundred million dollar bond issue. We're going to issue another twenty million dollars worth of bonds, and we will also earn some interest on that. But right now, we're two point four six six, six-two-four million under budget, on the last one, we were two point zero zero eight million under budget, and most of that came from the John Muir, in fact, all of it came from John Muir. Uh, referendum budget thirty-four point seven nine million and design budget thirty-four point three million. So, good news, you'll see this start to fill in with a little bit more color, more green, and eventually more orange or amber as well. Questions on the budget?
Yeah, Bob, I had one, and maybe this might be a Sharon question instead. Has, um, have you had any suggestions of what projects we'll be designing next after West and John Muir go to bidding? And then are we going to end up having a pause because maybe some of the same construction companies would do the next phase for us?
If I had my Gantt chart, chart up right now, I could probably answer that more, and, and we'd probably share that at a board meeting at some point. You can start getting that answer by looking at old board documents, otherwise I can make sure the next board meeting, or maybe even in an email, to say what that next design, uh, probably, I'm thinking, uh, you know, J D Jones is one that's here to stay, you think of those, those schools that we're not really talking about in our restructuring efforts. It might be wise to start tackling some of the design work of some of those buildings. Thomas Jefferson, Maine.
I agree with all three of those.
We'll see all the restructuring.
Yeah, I, I was wondering if Sharon had updated it based upon how things have been progressing. So, then the other question, um, I kind of have for the, the group, um, do we need to be like officially authorizing that additional four fifty that we talked about a while back for the additional addition square footage, the fifteen sixty-six square footage at West that goes on the back, and then, and, and the other five hundred thousand for the footings?
Yes, the opportunity, and you'll see that light green number, twenty-eight point eight-nine-five million. It's light green because we started to change it, and it's not really a design phase number, but we knew it was expecting to come in at least five hundred thousand over what the old number was, but we added the structure in the southeast corner. We're trying to do something a little bit different with the additional square footage on the southeast, west corner, rather, southeast. We're trying to compensate by maybe changing some designs that you know, maybe bleachers, maybe track resurfacing, some of those things. So that's light green because it hasn't been approved by the board yet, but you'll get that opportunity when we bring the ninety-five percent West design to the board, we'll be clear about what is exactly in that ninety-five percent design. It will, as of what we're doing right now, it will include the structure for as many as three floors on the southwest side, but it will also only include one floor. It will include the community room off of the commons. That displaces some storage square footage that you're talking about in the far southeast corner. It will include all of that, and then we'll see what the design budget comes in at, and we'll also see what we could compromise in the rest of the, you know, designs are complex, right, and maybe we can shuffle some other things around and save a few dollars and bring it in real close to what the original referendum budget was, but we're expecting it to be at least five hundred thousand more. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So we'll move on then to the five-year fiscal forecast.
I'll stay up here, uh. I have a clicker, is that going to work on this? Oh, awesome, can you blow it, let me see it first, okay, blow it up a little bit, if you can. Great. All right, let's see if it fits on a screen, that might be too big. A little bit smaller, I'm sorry, and then if you, can you get rid of that stuff on the left to make it just the medium? I know you're good at running these things. So. Okay, that's okay, that's okay. With the help of Noel Tordson, who's with me here tonight, he can maybe help me answer some of these questions and his staff. The work that they put into this is just phenomenal, and the way they understand how different factors that are changing affects our budget ultimately, and how to work it into the projection model, it's just fabulous what they do in that office, I just can't say enough about them. Uh, the projection model that the tool we call Forecast, it used to be called Forecast Five, now it's Frontline, generates, I've got last, and if you only look at that independently, it tells a very small part of the story. You might start at the end and look at the forecast model and say, wow, we're really in good shape, we only have to cut seven hundred thousand dollars, and then maybe a couple million the next year, and a couple million. Those are reasonable numbers for a one hundred million dollar plus budget. If we ignore the assumptions that you saw in November and again in December, you would think that's a pretty rosy situation for our fiscal reality for next year. So I feel it's necessary to talk about the assumptions again, and on this page, one of the first assumptions that you see on top is all salary and benefits for all of our employee group is projected to be at three percent. That's a comfortable number, it's close to a number that we've used in the past, it's a baseline. The Consumer Price Index right now, and we know inflation is very high, the Consumer Price Index for next year's bargaining purposes at least is eight percent. So if we're talking about a three percent salary increase for all of our employees, and inflation is at eight percent, which has gone down since then, but the trailing twelve months is at eight percent, uh, that's probably an area of the budget that we want to address and offer more than three percent. So that's a concern if the assumption is three. Also, in yellow and red, some of the assumptions change, the number of retirees. When I presented it in November, I believe we're projecting twenty retiree teachers, we have twenty-nine retiree teachers. And then also, the other number in yellow is the dollar salary at which they retire. And we replace them in many cases with less expensive teachers. That makes balancing the budget easier, that, that works in the name of budget relief, and it does every year that we keep staffing the same. If staffing goes up, if staffing goes down, and that's another complicating factor, but we're assuming staffing is the same in this case. So those are important assumptions. The other assumptions I want to point out is towards the bottom, the second to last row, health insurance percent increase. Oftentimes, we project things right around six percent, which is medical trend. And sometimes, if we know our health plan is doing quite well, we'll have the first number be less than six, and then eventually they're six, which is medical trend. Medical trend might even be seven or eight right now. This year, that two percent will not turn to zero in the name of a budget reconciliation item. Sometimes it starts out at two, and then we make it zero, and it helps us balance our budget, that's going to stay two. Because of seven-one, two thousand twenty-four, one of our three plans is going to go up ten percent. We've talked about that before in public in this space. Our Freedom Network Health Plan, which allows people to choose a much wider network, is running very expensive right now, which means we're projecting with premiums for it to be one hundred percent, it's at a hundred forty-three percent. So there's a need to increase it ten percent. And by increasing it ten percent with about a third of our population, we expect some people to migrate to a narrower plan, and overall, we're expecting a two percent increase in premiums. So that two percent, some energy went into developing that number, and it's going to stay that number, it's not going to be reduced to a zero like it does many years. If we look at the next page, noteworthy on this page is our contracted pupil services, about halfway down, object three forty-one. We've got two years left on our first student contract, and those last two years are for a two-and-a-half percent increase and a two-and-a-half percent increase. Beyond that, I've got fives, who knows what it's going to be, it all depends on what the labor environment is going to be at that point. It could be five, but more than likely, it could be ten, it could even be twenty. Especially if we, uh, go with a challenger instead of, uh, an incumbent. Usually, a challenger will cost a little bit more, that's what we found in the past, so that's noteworthy, has not changed, you've seen that before? Yes?
Sorry, one question, is that even, I mean, when we had talked before, we had said it's likely minimum ten percent, could be twenty-plus. Is that doing us any favors by just penciling that in at five?
That's also going to be the first year of restructuring if we go in that direction, so that number could be disrupted, not only by the labor, not only by the, the new contract, but also by, uh, restructuring. So you're right, the five percent is probably way under, we don't pay as much attention to that third, fourth, and fifth year of the projection tool, but that's a good point, we should probably make that bigger in the name of being realistic.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think it'll just paint a clear picture of what we should expect.
And it probably isn't going to move the needle as much as you might think, but in the name of being accurate, I think it's a good idea, it's about a three-and-a-half million dollar spend, and changing from a five to a ten, or, or a ten to a twenty even is a good idea. Good catch. Noteworthy on this page is seeing all the zeros. These are the parts of our budget, not labor, uh, non-labor costs that we have a little bit more control of. If we have the same amount of money, we're just forced to do less with it, less professional development, less stuff, less supplies, less equipment, fewer improvements. All of these are zero almost every year, in fact, every year I've been here, it's been zero or less. Some years, we impose two percent decreases on the stuff that we buy. Last year was an eight percent decrease on the stuff that we buy, so I think noteworthy on this page is seeing all of the zeros. Noteworthy on this page, Cassie, you bring it up just a little bit. Towards the top, we're making an assumption that, third row from the top, two hundred dollar per pupil revenue limit increase. If you think about what we've had the last few years, we had two zeros in a row. So you might think two hundred dollars is optimistic, I think two hundred dollars is probably the floor. Based on the recognition by the legislature that we have gotten two, zero, two years in a row, and I've had enough lawmakers on both sides of the aisle tell me, you're getting something. I think a one hundred dollar increase would be an insult, I think a two hundred dollar increase would be quite an insult, but I think two hundred dollars is a floor. So what we're developing here on the revenue side is pretty minimal, two hundred dollar increase per pupil. I think WASDA just did some research on what you need to catch up to inflation, and it was more like two thousand dollars per pupil, or even three thousand dollars per pupil. What the governor is proposing is three hundred fifty per pupil, plus another twenty-four in per pupil categorical aid. So the governor would replace that two hundred with a three seventy-four, which would be even more optimistic than what you're going to see in a little while. Also, pretty related is the very bottom number, the special ed adable cost reimbursement, which has been thirty percent for the last couple of years, the governor, even though we have thirty up there, because that's what it's been recently, the governor's proposing sixty, and at one point, the DPI and the governor were proposing go up to forty-five, then go up to sixty, and what the governor presented a couple weeks ago was sixty right off the bat. That's a significant number, if you want to root for something in the state budget, that's probably a good place to root for, if we could get that thirty changed to a sixty. Four million dollars, Noel? Four million dollars, that's a pretty large increase in itself. And even though it's special ed reimbursement, it doesn't just go to special ed because it reduces the transfer to special ed, it helps all students. But going back up, the revenue limit exemption, I think is worth pointing out, the two-point-one million dollar revenue limit exemption for two years, and then it goes to one million for two years, and then it goes to zero. Remember, we're in the midst of a phase two and a phase three revenue limit exemption, which means you get to artificially increase your revenue limit for energy efficiency projects, and then you borrow money for ten years. We've got two years left on phase two, and then two more left on phase three, and then we're done paying back that debt. It doesn't free up budget for anything else, but it does help your mill rate, it helps your taxpayers, and it's debt that's retired, and we don't have to worry about it anymore. So it goes from two million down to one million, then eventually it goes to zero. Probably the most important assumption, because this is what gets a lot of attention, and what we're talking about in our daily conversations, the ESER funding that's scheduled to go away. And we try to tell the lawmakers that we're using ESER funding in exactly the way that they encouraged us to use it. There's no new state money, so use your ESER money. So, two-thirds of the way down, use of federal funds, the ESER reimbursement for non-personnel, I'm not too worried about because we're buying stuff, we're buying professional development, we're buying curriculum materials. We stop with the money, we stop buying those things, that's easy to adjust for. The very next one, ESER reimbursements for personnel. This year, the current year, we're spending three point five-five-five million dollars of ESER money on personnel. Next year, it goes down by one point five-seven-five million dollars, that's baked into the assumptions. So if you see the projection model later on saying, easy, we only have to reduce seven hundred thousand dollars and we're balanced, that's seven hundred thousand dollars in addition to making these assumptions work. And in the assumptions, it's only three percent salary increase, and in the assumptions, it's one point five-seven-five million dollars less staff, and the very next year, one point six-eight million dollars less staff until ESER is then gone. And we, we knew that was going to happen when we started spending ESER, lawmakers kind of asked us to do that indirectly. They didn't, of course, come right out and say, spend ESER money on personnel, but they put us in a position where we almost, we almost had to. Those are just the assumptions. Saw them in November, we talked about them a little bit in November and again in December, but they feed this, which is our projection model. And some of these sheets are a little bit more exciting than others, this just recaptures the past. This is a history since two thousand eighteen, right up to the one that's in dark over on the right, that's a current budget year. Revenue on top, expenditures, how much of a surplus or deficit, notice we're operating under a deficit budget right now that you passed last October, and then what the contribution to fund balance has been each one of those years. The very next page probably is the one that should get all the attention. This is our Fund Ten projection, and it also includes Fund Twenty-seven because Fund Twenty-seven transfer affects Fund Ten. This is our Fund Ten projection for the five years. When we talk about our fiscal health and the pressure that's put on our budget, we talk about the Fund Ten budget, just always. And the most important number immediately is in the two thousand twenty-four fiscal year column, about halfway down, seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, almost seven hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars that we need to reduce if we're going to have a balanced budget. Now, in the past, in October, this board has passed unbalanced budgets. In fact, seven hundred thousand dollars is close enough to being balanced, and we have a strong enough fund balance that the previous three or four years, you've passed an unbalanced budget by seven hundred ninety-seven thousand. This could be considered a balanced budget already, but keep in mind, ESER has to be fixed, and we only have three percent towards salary and wages. But at the same time, we only have two hundred dollar increase in per pupil revenue limit increase, so that could be a little bit rosier once that picture comes into focus. The subsequent years, you know, Pat, you've already made one correction to one of them, that would move some of those subsequent years a little bit, but the next year, if we fix next year, the next one turns into a two-point-zero-eight million dollar reduction. Again, we're trying to get rid of some of the ESER expenditures, and then the very next year, after we're kind of recovered from the ESER cliff, another seven hundred eleven thousand dollar reduction to balance a budget. Again, based on the assumptions. Okay, does anyone know how to read that?
One question on the ESER money, do we have clear line of sight in terms of what personnel that money is funding?
Some are coded there, but just because they're coded there this year doesn't mean they're the ones that go away next year. We had to code something to get the ESER reimbursement, I don't know if Tabitha wants to share anything about, uh, identifying them.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we know the number that we have to reconcile by one point seven million, we can go in and identify, here are the positions that were brought on that make up this one point seven million.
Some of those are really easy because they were brought on, and they were ESER-created, so to speak. But some of it was creating positions that weren't necessarily ESER-specific, they contributed towards the ESER, uh, spirit. Uh, but we had them prior to us, prior to the pandemic.
So we can identify which ones we have to unwind?
We will need to.
Yeah.
We'll need to, and HR is working on that with staffing plans with our elementaries and our secondaries and, uh, overall district-wide, so they're working on that right now. That's one of our bigger tasks that we have right now, aside from restructuring itself. That's a huge task that we'll bring you more on in the next couple of months as part of a reconciliation plan.
Since you're on this page, Bob, um, is it correct for me to understand that because of the fund balance, that's what we've been using to get rid of your red lines each time, and we have a good enough fund balance that it's showing that our fund's going to go down all the way to twenty-eight, but we're using that to backfill without any new revenue?
Not exactly, it's the one thing, we, we'll bring a reconciliation plan to you in the next month or two. And that plan will involve probably some increases in expenditures, and some reductions in expenditures, and certainly some changes to the assumptions when we find out what the state is going to do. So we find out what the state's going to do, change assumptions, bring in maybe higher salary and wage numbers, make some reductions. Won't be in health insurance this year, but it usually has been, utilities, sometimes the case, other uh, non-personnel cuts are getting pretty hard to come by, they're pretty hard to find. But we present you with a reconciliation plan that gets us close to balanced, and then throughout the summer, we continue to pass versions of that budget until it gets passed in October, and it usually is unbalanced, and it gives us comfort knowing that we have fund balance if we were going to hit that budget on the head and come in a million dollars under. Lately, the labor climate has saved us money in our budget. Some transportation routes saved us some money in our budget, other things save us money in our budget, so even though in October we pass a budget that's a deficit budget by seven hundred, maybe we only have to access half of that in fund balance. But that strong fund balance does a few things, right now, we're in the midst of borrowing a lot of money. Gives us a very good credit rating, when we do a credit rating with Moody's, they give us a great credit rating, and that means a lower interest rate, and also it gives us that comfort level. If we're going to do something with a deficit budget, we know that it's, that we have some buffer there.
Also, it's, fund balance can be deceptive, and I've said this before, like, our fund balance is the amount that's in there on the date that DPI says, tell us what your fund balance is. For me, I think it's for, better for my mind to think about it as, what's the lowest it was during the year? Like, that, that's the number, so it's not twenty-eight million, if at some point in the year it got down to a hundred thousand dollars, and we were close to having to go out for a short-term loan to pay our employees the next week, it's really was a hundred thousand dollars, you know what I mean? So that's how I always try to think of it, um, rather than just the, the date that we pick for reporting, or we don't pick it, DPI picks it, but.
Fiscal year end, so these are June thirtieth numbers.
But the way our funding comes in, we're still paying people in months where we're not getting funding in, so we're paying them out of our fund balance, so it's going down, down, down.
The, the date that gets a lot of attention is this one with the public. The date that gets attention for Noel and myself and his department is December fifth, Noel-ish? First payroll in December, that's where we have to make payroll before we get our first aid payment, and that's when it's at its lowest. And like you said, if it's five million at that point, we feel pretty comfortable, we don't have to short-term borrow. But if it's a million at that point, we get a little bit more nervous, especially if we have a lot of health claims. We have a lot of medical claims because we are a self-funded medical plan, that could cause it to be even lower than that. So, we have some of that money protected for our health plan, and some of it protected so we don't have to short-term borrow, which a lot of districts do. Uh, I used to be in a district, every year we borrowed fifteen million dollars, it wasn't for a real long amount of time, but we don't have to do that here.
But it adds up, because there used to be a budget item of, um, short-term interest. So every year, annual budget would have, you could have six figures just in interest, because you had to borrow millions of dollars for two months.
Exactly.
Were you able to, um, or did you, did you put any assumptions in for any level of restructuring merger happening in Fall of Twenty-Five, or we just left all that out for now?
It's all out of the assumptions. It probably could fit in the budget itself, the assumptions lead to the. The assumptions lead to the reconciliation plan, the reconciliation plan leads to the budget. A good place for it to be, because this creates the baseline, right? I hope nobody's thinking, oh, three percent salary for everybody, right, fixed. Probably not gonna be that. Uh, a lot of, but it creates a baseline. And then from that baseline, we create a budget reconciliation plan. And in that budget reconciliation plan, we could bring in one time costs for restructuring. We could maybe reduce one time costs for something else. And then you'd see a more clear picture of what next year only's budget is gonna. And then the reconciliation plan will lead to the actual first version of the budget in May. And then it'll develop from there. Gets a little bit less attention after May, to be quite honest with you. Some of those steps are just, you know, requirements by the DPI and statute. Not a lot of changes after that. I could talk about every one of these slides, it's never been as long, but they aren't as exciting, to be quite honest with you, if this thing, uh. All right, am I doing that or are you, Cassie? Okay, so here's Fund Ten, just on the revenue side. So you saw revenue and expenses historically and projected. Here you're seeing revenue assumptions, just on the revenue side. Some of these things end up being kinda goofy because it makes the assumption that you're operating at a deficit and a greater deficit and a greater deficit, right? So it doesn't really reflect very accurately year two, three, four, and five. But this is more precise, uh, revenue information than if you scroll down, because I can't anymore. Uh, here's more precise expenditure, even that more precise expenditure. Uh, you see salary and benefits behave a little funny the first few years because of Esser going away. Even though all salary and benefits are assumed to be three percent increase, you see some salary going down and then a little bit bigger than three, uh, and benefits, uh, being a little bit up and down too. They get bigger towards the end because our biggest benefit is health insurance. And the health insurance assumptions are two, four, and then a bunch of sixes, right? Uh, special ed fund, again, some of the personnel, uh, this is on the, on the, on the revenue side. That, that thirty percent, uh, state source stays pretty stable. We're hoping for that, that's where you can see it double, we're turning it into four million dollars. Uh, that's the history, but if you go to the next one, uh, a good number to look at there is state sources, four point five. Now, that's not all reimbursable with that thirty percent reimbursement, but most of it is. If you think of a thirty percent reimbursement changing into a sixty percent reimbursement, that four point five million could easily turn to eight million. Okay, so that's what we're rooting for in the state budget, right? Okay, so again, more detail on revenue and expenditures for Fund Twenty Seven, special ed, flip to the next one. Uh, revenue on the Fund Twenty Seven side, you can go to the next one. A lot of this you can look at a little bit more closely when you have some time. Fund Twenty Seven expenditures, future, next one. Fund Thirty Eight, uh, this is the past. Fund Thirty Eight is where we record all of our energy efficiency debt payments, where we get additional revenue limit, but we have to make debt payments with that. On the very next slide is the future, so now you see that going to zero eventually. We've got phase two and three for a couple more years, then just phase three for a couple more years, then nothing. And if we go to the next slide, now you see Fund Thirty Nine in the past. I remember Fund Thirty Nine, we got pretty aggressive with, that was part of our strategy to pay down debt and give us an opportunity to pass a referendum with no mill rate in, increase. In fact, we talked about a forty three cent mill rate decrease and we doubled that. This strategy that you're seeing in the past allowed us to do that. Getting aggressive with prepaying debt, saving millions of dollars of taxpayer money in debt. But the very next slide is the future of Fund Thirty Nine. And you'll see how it drops off considerably, but also keep in mind that we've got twenty million dollars that we have to issue yet, that we're gonna try fitting in there. And we didn't know exactly where it would fit in last year, January seventeenth, when you asked me to structure the debt in a certain way. The closer we get to understanding how restructuring fits into our plans, we can build that next opportunity for a referendum with as much precision as we want to, by placing that last twenty million into that debt profile. If the natural opportunity for a referendum happens, so be it. If it's not natural, we can do like we've done in the past. And we can prepay debt, we can levy for additional debt to create the perfect opportunity to make it the most affordable for taxpayers, which we did the last time. So you'll see that referendum debt drop off, but it's not gonna stay that way because we've gotta fill it in some at least. Next one, I think I have some stuff I wanted to show you. That's it, we're at the end. I don't know if you have questions, it's a lot of data. You can take it home and really look at it a little bit more, maybe you looked at it the last day or two. Uh, Noel Torson's here, he can answer a lot of questions and I can't. Uh, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And this will, and this will continue to come back to us as well as these assumptions change and as you build a reconciliation plan and then the budget. So we'll be looking at this all year long, but if anybody has any other questions now? Okay, and that's not an action item, so we will move on then to the WIAA co-op for boys swimming.
Hello, everybody. I'm here to request on behalf of our two high schools that you consider a proposal to form a co-op between East and West for boys swimming. We have swimming at East right now for our boys, but not at West. And so the co-op would give students at both schools the opportunity to play together, to participate together, to be involved. We are in the process of working through this, so we'll actually bring the full approval to you at the next meeting tonight. I'm just hoping that, um, you can maybe answer a few questions, maybe get a few questions you would like answered for next time and that you'll move things forward. So far, in terms of the process, the conferences had conversations and the A Ds in the conference have recommended to the principals of the conference to go ahead and approve this on their end. But with the weather this week, the principals were not able to meet, so that was delayed a little bit. But they will meet before that, uh, before the board is back together again. What can I answer for you or what information can I bring back?
Questions from board members?
Is there any, you have on the second page, under number five, about, um, is this the, you got ten, sixteen, sixteen, fourteen, is this the number of students that participate?
Yes. So East has been able to have a consistent team, but West has not had a, a team, um, in those years. And there's one student we know for sure of who's interested next year that could grow a little bit, but probably not enough to sustain its own team next year.
Right.
Okay, hearing no, no other questions, then I am seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the WIAA co-op for boys swimming as presented.
So.
First and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have a restructuring update.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Um, so shorter update tonight, we've been doing a lot of work in the background, trying to get things, uh, ready to go. Uh, if you go to the next, uh, there we go. So, um, just so you know, we are, we are taking some time to really finalize some planning. Talking about some consultants, talking about that, but really focusing on quality over speed. We know how important these, these next couple of years are in terms of planning and implementation, um, feedback. So we are focusing on quality. Um, very thoughtful, very collaborative. So that's kind of the, the things we have in mind as we continue to move forward.
Can you go to the next one, Cassie?
So here's, in the short term, what we are trying to do. Um, as you know, we've got a, a large number of teams that need to begin to work. Uh, we wanna precisely map out their work. Um, who needs to go first, who needs to go second, whose work is dependent on whom. And so we're working on, on developing that, that structure, similar to what you've seen with referenda, right? There are things that happen first and second and whatnot. Um, we are going to be reaching back out to, to staff, um, to, to get feedback into a number of these teams. We're looking for opportunities for student input. Um, not sure what those are going to be yet, but just again, these are, um, on our minds. We are talking to some possible outside project consultants. Don't know if we're going to bring any for, uh, for approval or if we're, or if, or not. We're, we're just exploring right now to see, um, what, what opportunities are out there. Again, I'm very confident, you know, in our staff. Um, but I just wanna make sure this, and we all do, we wanna make sure that this goes, uh, you know, is, is done in a very, very high quality. So we're, we're doing some research there. You know, obviously the board did not take any action on elementary, so we are, um, you know, talking to our charter schools. We got our, our, our current Montessori charter together and our proposed environmental charter. We got those folks together to talk a little bit about some possibilities. Um, I know there's been some questions about the childcare, so I have a meeting with Mr. Bailey from the YMCA. We're gonna talk about that business model, what that would be. And we will bring that to the board to ensure that the board is comfortable with that business model before we proceed talking about buildings and whatnot. So, um, so again, we'll, we'll bring that back to the board. And then community engagement communications, um, Diana and I have been talking quite a bit. Um, we've, we said one thing that we would like to do is hold some quarterly public meetings, just an open meeting. People can come and listen, we can give them an update, they can give feedback, whatever that might be. We're seeking the best, uh, venue and schedule for that. Um, might be in one of our schools, but there's a number of other spaces in the community that might be really attractive to folks. There's space at the public library, the space at the Boys and Girls Club, maybe N T C. Um, so anyway, that, that's, those are the kinds of things that are, are being discussed right now. Let me pause, just, can you back up one, Cassie, sorry? Any questions or suggestions on, on those first couple of slides? Otherwise, I've got some, some updates and some questions for you.
One suggestion on the community meetings, as I'm, I'm sure you've thought of, is, um, variety would probably be a good idea so that it's at different locations and different times. You may have a meeting that, you know, most people can attend when it's at six o'clock in the evening, but there's that, you know, percentage that can't attend evening meetings. And so it might be good to have one in an afternoon, probably not gonna be as highly attended as the one at six, but, um, just a little bit of variety like that might be a good idea as you develop those.
Thank you.
And you might need to consider doing two on the same day, one leading in to the other. So because of quarterly, if we want to be on a quarterly basis, that would make it more frequent.
Thank you, yeah. And the quarterly was just our first thought. We figured that, you know, with about three months, excuse me, in between, there'd be significant enough progress, there'd be something to report out. Um, but not too long where people kinda lose, lose track of things. So, yeah, we could, we could do it more often, I'm just not sure what would, what, uh, if it would be as, as, uh, as productive.
One question on the community engagement, I think that we've all heard the calls now for like a, an advisory referendum question, um, that would be next April. What are your thoughts on that?
So, so, yeah, it's, um, where I'm at, and certainly this is, if the board is interested, we could do it. My thought is this, um, and, and it's interesting, I'll, I'll, I'll share this with you because now you asked me, now I have to talk about it. Um, I'm reading a very interesting book and it talks a little bit about the history of our democracy and why we are a representative democracy and not a, uh, just a pure, um, you know, um, I forget the actual phrase, when everything is decided by a majority rules. Um, the whole, the whole reason that we are a representative democracy, and I think the reason why I think the board should make the decision is that people do not have the time to understand all the complexities that go into a decision like this. And, and the opportunity to think about and explore the long-term ramifications, right, projecting those. And the, the, and the charge to really think about what's best for all children instead of their own personal experience. So, so we have a representative democracy, you've been elected to represent the community. You've spent dozens, if not hundreds of hours to understand this. And so to put the decision in the hands of people who inherently are not as well-informed, I think would be a mistake. So my recommendation would be that the board makes the decision, but certainly that is a conversation we could entertain.
Yeah, I, I just find it interesting because this is one of those situations where, um, the feedback clearly has been all over the place. And I can tell you that sitting here today, I have, have heard, I'm not gonna say significantly, but I've heard generally more questions and concerns about the plan than I've heard favorability. Like, we're all in, let's, let's go. So, and a referendum that is non-binding, I'm not suggesting that it would be definitive, that tool is in place, in my opinion, to address scenarios just like this, where it is a, frankly, a well-represented data point that we can collectively use to consider possible changes, alterations to direction, et cetera. I'm not suggesting that anything, you know, just comes to a grinding halt. But, um, again, it seems representative because at the end of the day, the people that would be voting and having input on this, I mean, many of them have or will have, every stu-, I mean, their student will be impacted by this in some way, shape, or form, past, present, I mean, present and future. So I, I think giving folks an opportunity to, to use that tool, that, you know, non-binding referendum tool and state explicitly, you know, where it is, then we have a clear data point from the community that says, you know, if, if everything is working as intended and the communication plan and the support is there, then it's nothing more than a good housekeeping seal stamp of approval. Great job, you're doing awesome, move forward. But if it says something else, um, maybe that should give us pause to consider again, perhaps a, a change in direction, not completely scrapping a project, but altering a course depending on what that feedback is.
I would, I would agree with that, I was gonna suggest about a non-binding referendum question as well so that more people could, you know, ha- have their voice heard in that fashion. We have done multiple surveys, right, over the last three years, when, when the very first referendum question came up in twenty one. And unfortunately, you know, out of eight thousand families-ish, right? We get, sometimes we get sixteen hundred survey returns. So that's a, a lower amount and maybe in this fashion, more people would be willing to speak out or, you know, or partake because they're going to vote instead of having the extra time just to do a survey of sorts, right? So, just another tool.
I think when it comes to surveys, um, there is an inherent problem, like you just mentioned. Um, of the surveys that we've done, I, even though it costs money, I definitely favored the one where we paid an actual company to come in and do a representative phone survey where they, um, you know, got whatever number of people to talk to that they needed to in order to be representative. You know, they know all the statistics on that and they actually had a conversation. And, and nothing's perfect because that's limited to who's willing to talk to you on the phone for twenty minutes. I mean, not everybody's willing to do that, so that isn't perfect either. Um, but I definitely favor that over just sending out a survey and having no idea what sort of representation you're getting or what kind of background knowledge the person has that's answering it. I, I liked that one that we did. Um, again, we don't do it all the time because those aren't free, we have to pay a company to do that.
And I haven't talked to President Boucher about this, so I wanna be respectful of his absence and his position on this. So I'm fine with, um.
Yeah, we're not listed for action tonight, so we can't make an decision.
No, 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 but I, I just, I wanna get Jim's input, but, um, I, I can ask him, um, based on discussions with him, to put this on the agenda next time for potential action. And if, if it gets support for the board, great, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Sure. Yep, we can do that.
And you'd be talking about, you said April, just so people understand, you're talking
April of twenty four.
Over a year from now, right? So this isn't, this isn't an emergency to decide, but, because we can't do it on the one and coming up here in a month.
Which, the, the more that I thought through this, actually kind of, to me, it plays into this very, very positively because we have more than a year to continue the communication and engagement and get people to understand all of those positive things that have been sold on this. So, by the time sold on this. So, by the time April rolls around, it should be a slam dunk.
Well, I think that's a good point. A, a, advisory referendum over a year from now would be more valuable than one in a month, because continually, I still hear from people who say, "I'm against the restructuring." And I say, "Why?" And then this reason they say, they say for this reason. It's actually not true. So, that person's going to vote, "No, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it, because it's going to make the class sizes bigger for elementary schools," but it's not. But they think it is, so they're going to vote, "No." So, I do think that if it happens, having it happen, you know, maybe it's a good thing we can't do it in a month, I guess what I'm saying, because I, I think it would be more valuable if it was that far down the road, because hopefully by then, there'll be some more information given out, and we can get a, you know, a more informed response.
Right. Well, and, and I think we have people's attention now, not that the attempts for the previous year, year and a half weren't trying to get their attention, but now, this, quote the cat's out of the bag, right? People are, their ears are to the, you know, tracks, and they're listening to everything that's going on. So, to me, now's a great time to continue with the communication, and, and as you guys build out these plans, you know, you talked about a few of them tonight, it's a wonderful thing that can happen in the next 12 months.
Well, we definitely have to continue the communication, because people's ears are open, but part of what their ears are open to is misinformation, because I see it. I mean, I see it on social media. I see just flat-out things that aren't true about the plan, and then it, it catches, and people say, "I don't like it because of A, B, and C," but none of those are true. So, we have to continue to communicate this, and I think the idea of quarterly or whatever meetings you have, I think is a good thing. And then, obviously, as the plan develops, I think some people thought that, "Okay, we voted, and so now, we just, that's it, now it's done." But actually, all that did is start the, start process, basically, of, of now we need to do the actual work, and work on implementing the plan, and who knows, there may be things that are discovered along the way that cause us to want to make changes to the plan in some fashion. So, I think now is where the, the hard work comes.
My thought is that referendums are often very skewed because of a number of other factors, of who may be running on the ballot for what kind of issues are going on. My tendency is to trust a really good, solid survey, where you're doing randomly picking the people from the, from your audience and getting a better balance than you're going to get from what might happen in a referendum that could get very controversial and two-sided, that sort of thing. So, I, my, my initial inclination is to think in terms of, what would it take to do another really good, solid survey, and have some really specific questions in that survey that would go out to a broad sample of the general public?
Yeah, those are, I mean, those, like I said, we can't do this, if we were going to go to an advisory referendum, it wouldn't be until over a year from now. So, we would have to decide by December or January, sometime in January, I think. And we're not listed for action tonight, so it's not something to decide tonight, but they're all good points to consider and talk about.
And, and the other thing, too, that came to mind, is that based on the feedback that we would get from that, I think would be a good, another data point to tell us, what is the appetite? Should we need another referendum with money attached to it to finish some of these things? You're going to have a great barometer on where the community's head is at, in terms of whether or not they would support that. So, I'll, like I said, I'll mention it to Jim and see where he wants to go with it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, the, the previous survey, I think that you were referring to, maybe Lee and Lance, was Mr. Leatherman. He's still in business, I spoke to him recently, but if, if that's something the board wants on the agenda, we could bring him maybe as a, as a resource to talk about the, the pros and cons of that. So, excellent. Thank you. So, a couple other things. Again, as we talk about engagement, as we talk about in communication, we thought about, we, we wanted to, just, I guess, food for thought, as Diana put in there, are would school board members be interested in serving as a liaison to some of these teams? There's pros and cons to that, too. You know, some, if, if, the, the goals would be those listed here. It would be an opportunity, if I'm running a team, and Joanna is my liaison, you know, she may come to some of the meetings, she may not, I would keep her updated. If I, as the team leader, wanted a board perspective, I could go to her and say, "What do you think the, you know, the board would need here, would want?" And so, it's, and then, the, the, at a board meeting like this, where a team would share an update, one of the board members would have, you know, some extra background, kind of like we did with the subcommittee members, right? So, so we were thinking about that. And again, no decision tonight, just wanted you to think about it. And I think the next slide is the list of team members. Again, these are the teams that we currently have, that we, we believe are going to need, excuse me. There may be more, but again, you can look at that list and say, "You know, I'd really like to be on whatever team, I'd love to be, you know, a, a part of that conversation." So, we talked to those team leaders, and they said, "Yep, there could certainly be a lot of value there." So, think about that. We'll return to that topic a little further down the road, unless there's questions.
Well, one question I would have is, as board members, you know, we always talk about how we do not have any power individually, we act only as a board. So, that may be sort of a, a fine line to walk, where you're in a meeting, I mean, could I actually tell somebody in a meeting what I think the board thinks about something? Well, I would actually have it, because I can't call everybody up and ask them about it and say, "What should I say at this meeting?" Because then I'm skirting the open meeting rules, I, I should, we should be talking about this. So, it's tricky. Like, the committee meetings were a little different, because I saw my role there as listening to what other people had to say, and answering questions, not about the board, but just, you know, about the district, like information they need to know. This would be a little bit trickier, because you're talking about a committee that's, or a, a team that's going to be actually making decisions, that's going to then come back to the board. I think it would be, I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but it would be, you'd have to be real careful with what the board member's role is.
It actually seems like it flies right in the face of what was shared a few weeks, or maybe a few months ago already, in terms of board member roles and responsibilities, right? We're not to be involved in the details. We are all supposed to hear the same information at the same time, so then we can deliberate, have discussion, have, you know, people hear and see what we're, what we're talking through, and then make decisions. I would be concerned that we would get more of the, you know, things are happening in these smaller meetings, and Lee's not informed, or Pat's not informed, or whatever it is, and the decision was already made before they came out of, you know, whatever these, these little groups are. I, I just think you avoid all that by bringing everything here, when the time is appropriate, share it with us, and we vote if it's an action item or, or not.
Yeah. Because we, if you think about it, we're not experts in this stuff, we've hired experts for this. So, our role would really be to try to say what the board thinks, kind of. And that would be very hard for one board member to do. I'm not, or what do you think, like, just like a scheduling for high school. None of us are experts on scheduling for high school, we have experts for scheduling for high school. So, my role on that would be to try to sort of guess at what I think the board will think about it, and that would make me very uncomfortable.
Can't you, can't, couldn't we be there as, just to force more open thinking sometimes on topics? Just to throw something?
Whatever that one person happens to think is the open thinking, yeah. I mean, it's, I don't know, it would make me uncomfortable, I think. But I'm not saying it's impossible.
And again, just, it was a thought we had. I've, I've used this in another district, i- it was, it was a positive. So, again, I, you're right, there's the risks and benefits to that. I guess it's similar, you know, you know, Mr. Sillers right now sits in on some of the planning meetings for West, right? And, and it's, it's been a, a healthy conversation, and, so I guess that was kind of in my mind when we, when we... So, thank you. Next one, Cassie. Okay, there was some interest at the last meeting about staggered implementation. So, we did a little bit of work on this, we, we generated three possible, or maybe even the most probable scenarios to do that. Take a quick peek. Here would be one, where we could actually start a year earlier. There is one element, there is one merger we could do, and that would be Hewitt-Texing, Texas merging into Riverview. Riverview has the capacity, if we move Riverview 4K into Hawthorne Hills, who would have the capacity for that. So, based on capacity, that is one merger we could do. Then the next year, and you'll see this in all of these, the eight, nine, 10, 12, would be the fall of '25, '26, that is predicated on the completion of the construction at West. Then the next year, for instance, we could move the fifth, and then the next merge the remaining 12 elementaries into eight, right? Option two, we don't do anything until the fall of '25, we do the high school. Then the next year, we merge Fifth, and then we merge, we take one or two combinations. Again, what you'll see in some of the, the possible risks here is we, we do a change, and, and we learn from that change, and then reapply what we learn later. So, that would be the, so it wouldn't have to be these two, but these were just the, the four we kind of thought about on the West side. And then the next year, merge those 11 remaining. Or the last option, we do it over two years, we do that eight, nine, 10, the secondary's in '25, '26, do all the elementary's in '26, '27. Again, these are just some options that, that, that could serve the purpose of, of spreading this out. If I do two more slides, then we can certainly take questions. We, we, we surveyed our principals, AP department leaders, our, our administrative team, just because they have a very broad view, they know the needs of the buildings, needs of departments, and we asked them, "If we did this, what do you think the risks would be? What would the benefits be? And are you in, would you, would you," I forget how exactly we'll ask it, we, we added the, the slide on here, "But the main risks were around staffing, and limiting opportunities for, you know, places for staff to go, and kind of dragging out this, where now we're, now we're in implementation mode, or change mode for multiple years." Right? That was some of the, you can kind of see, these capture the, the general risks of that, expressed by our administrators. And the next one would be the, the benefits. Again, see what works, and what, what doesn't. Time to make the best decisions possible. The, the top of the sta- staff might have less to plan for all at once. So, I guess that, and then the last slide on this section from them was, "Do you prefer a staggered implementation over doing it all at once?" And you can see it's about a, a three to one. About three, 72% said, "No, would really rather just do it once, instead of spreading it out," and about a quarter or so said, "Yeah, we would prefer that." So, let me stop there and, and see what the board interest is in, in this topic.
Can you repeat who it was that was asked this staggered implementation question? Just the administrators?
This was, yeah, this was our full administrative team. So, principals, APs, our department, like a, like a John Winter, a coordinator, like that, and LA, so about 50 folks.
Okay. Because I guess I'd be really interested to know how the staff feels about staggered implementation over the administrators, honestly, or at least along with administrators, I should maybe clarify. And then, so I don't know if that's possible to get that, or if that's a too big of an ask, but I'd be very interested to know how that lands when staff are asked. Additionally, I have a question about where it sounds like overwhelmingly the concern or the risk is staffing. Can you explain to me what, when they say there's, there's less options for where staff can go, what does that mean?
Yeah. So, and Tabitha may have some more thoughts on this, but essentially, if we, if we do our merger all at once, and, and I am a, you know, a fifth-grade teacher or something that wants to teach in the middle school, or I'm an eighth-grade teacher that wants to teach in the high school, or I want to be at a different school, right, any of those kinds of options, the more we break up the, the restructure, it's just the fewer of those options that are available for a possible transfer if people are interested. Now, Tabitha, what you would add to that?
We are already hearing from staff who are saying to us that we really would like the opportunity to go to middle school, so they're already starting to ask about those transfers now. And at the same time, we're also hearing from some middle school teachers who really would like to drop back down to the elementary versus potentially going to like eight, nine. And so, there's a lot of, of that, it's, it's a lot of our middle school staff, but we also have elementary folks always wanting to go up, and vice versa. So, depending upon their licensure, depending upon their interests and their long-term goals for their career, having all of them available at the same time kind of allows for like, if you think of a puzzle, and you throw all the pieces up in the air, and you put it all back together again at once, versus if you take a puzzle and you throw it up in the air, and you put half of them together, you've still got half of them in a pile. And so, we have less, less things that we can do in terms of moving and swapping people, which I guess when you're in the thick of it, like I am all the time, that makes perfect sense. And for those of you who don't spend like weeks and weeks and weeks every year doing the staffing process for the school district of our size, it, it may not, so, but it's the best analogy that I can share.
Thank you.
So, using the example that you gave, then, for, so if there's someone, let's say, in the middle school setting who might want to move into the high school, or the eight, nine, and be that person, versus stay in a five, seven setting, they would have that opportunity when that happens, right? But if they, but they wouldn't have the opportunity to choose that and move down to the elementary? I mean, it seems like they'll have the opportunity, it's just they wouldn't have all of the opportunities at once, right?
It depends on the timing. So, if we've already filled the positions, because we're waiting to do the next move until the following year, there may not be positions available for them to shift into at that point in time. Whereas, there are sometimes opportunities when we're doing all of them at once. When we do the elementary staffing for the 13 elementary schools currently, we have that happen. So, I did a survey, transfer, transfer survey for all of our elementaries recently. There's a number of people who put on there, "I'd be interested in a transfer for these buildings, or these grade levels, or these subjects," right? So, I've got that whole list, and I may not have openings in this building right now, but if the person for lines up from them gets their transfer, that creates a domino, so I can then move somebody potentially into an opportunity I didn't previously have available. Well, if we, if we do them in two separate years, and we fill all of our staffing for the first round, those spots are then full, and I don't then create those openings in the same way when we go to do year two. So, I, I hope that better answers your question, and especially with, with the fifth grade piece, because we have some efficiencies when we move to fifth grade, and we're looking when we have those efficiencies to be able to create some additional resource teachers, potentially, you know, instructional coaches, or reading, support staff, whatever those resource positions are in the end result. We won't be able to create those positions until we have those openings available. So, it just, it just has some limitations if we're not doing it all at once. Granted, it's a big job to do all at once, but it's going to be a big job either way, so.
I appreciate that clarification, that is helpful. You asked kind of for our thoughts on this. I guess to me, I hear those concerns, and, and I can appreciate that an individual teacher might feel like they have less options in that place, but when I look at this from the greater view, my concerns are far more focused on the larger implementation piece, and I want to see if we're moving down this road, that this is done with excellence. And I think in order to do that well, we need to be able to slow it down a little bit, and not have every building impacted all at once, so that our admin teams and all of these teams that, you know, were just outlined for us, can focus their attention in certain areas. And we also have the time with regard to building a new DNA with staff that's coming from all, all different places. And I think that that takes time to really build momentum, and take people from both buildings, if they're merging, and really develop... buildings if they're merging and really develop that sort of forward momentum. And I guess that's just really important to me, and then when you see, okay, this went well, this was a really great way that we were able to engage people who have already got the relational currency in both buildings, and now together they came and built that in one building, now we can see how that went well at the high school level, now let's implement that in the middle school or elementary levels. I just think that that's critical in order for this to be done a little bit more smoothly and a little bit more effectively. So, you know, if you're looking for, you know, who's interested, I'm definitely interested in the benefit of the staggered implementation and hearing from staff. Like we said, everybody's going to have individual preferences, but when we step back and see what's the best thing for the district as a whole, that's this whole conversation is not about my kid and my experience or my job, but like, what's the best thing for the whole? And I, when I take a step back and see what that is, I think staggered implementation is a more careful, thoughtful approach. So I would be in favor of looking at that and also getting the feedback from staff about their interest in staggered versus all at once.
Yeah. And just a reaction to that, we had an admin meeting Tuesday after our board meeting, so I just had an opportunity to talk to, with that group in particular about this, and so that's why we followed that up with a, with the survey. We can certainly do an educational piece for the rest of the staff and ask them if the board's interested.
One of the questions I had, Bob, is there any money in the budget? I didn't see it in the materials for retention payments? So, so we have staff in grade schools, right, middle schools, high schools, who are going to be impacted, whether they're from a school that is going somewhere, or whether they're in that school that is going to be receiving another school. I can almost guarantee you that regardless of what school someone is sitting in, every person in that building is saying, what's, what about me? Because there are clearly going to be some positions that are redundant, that are not necessarily going to scale with the size of students, et cetera. And if those folks don't have a clear path for their career, and if they're not incentivized to stay and doing what they're doing, we could very easily find ourselves starting this fall in a shortfall for some critical staff. And one of the ways that, I've done this numerous times in my day job, one of the ways that you combat that and help it out is to say, yes, you're important, we need you, we need you here for this long, and we're going to put our money where our mouth is.
Without regard for whether that's a good idea or not, it is not built into the assumptions.
Okay, so there's nothing?
Nothing built into the assumptions.
Okay.
Not to say it won't be built into a reconciliation plan or an eventual budget or something that that three percent changes into, right? I think that three percent's going to change, up or down, hopefully up. That can be a part of it.
Okay. Because, I mean, my guess is, and Tabitha, I don't know what you're hearing, but my guess is, like Marshall, Stettin, and Maine may be the only schools that you're not hearing from?
No. There's a lot of, there's a lot of schools that have not had staff resigned. There's a very small minority of staff that so far have been asking about moving, because the answer they received is, full buildings will move with full student populations, and that's been pretty comforting to most. So we haven't, we haven't had an overwhelming response of that. It's people who are just looking to shift direction.
Okay.
I have a question on the, when you think about staggered implementation, do you assume staggered planning as well? Or do you assume we go forward with the planning of all of it at the same time and just the implementation is staggered?
Primarily, just the implementation would be staggered. We would create the plan, implement whatever portion the board said they wanted implemented at what point, learn from that, maybe modify the plan based on those lessons, but the planning would all essentially be done ahead.
Okay. So if we look at one of the ones that had elementary happening a year later, for example, that doesn't, that doesn't mean you say, well, we got an extra year for elementary, so we're just going to think about, we're just going to plan and meet and talk about secondary this year, and we'll do elementary next year? You would be working on all of it right away?
Yes.
But just knowing in the back of your mind that we do have an extra year for elementary?
Yes, absolutely. That would be my thinking on this. Because, again, some of the plans that we create will likely impact other levels, so we would need to do it, I think, simultaneously.
Okay.
I know your option one seemed kind of interesting just for the, from the perspective, I think it was, yeah, option one, and I don't know if you would do the Hewitt to Riverview then, or maybe a year later, but what I was going to say is, I like the idea of doing possibly one of those mergers, and obviously Texas being one of the smallest ones to fold into another school would provide a benefit in implementation and learning something from that that could be transferred to some of the other mergers, so. Something along those lines where, yeah, maybe we are staggering the rest of the elementaries, but doing that one, just to get a feel for, you know, any complications that can be, lessons learned that can be applied to, you know, future mergers.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
All right. Okay, can you advance the next one, Cassie? I think the next is, is it, hey, look ahead.
Transportation.
Transportation, yeah, we have a, yeah, would you please? Thank you.
Okay. We teased our transportation plan, or at least what we've done in the name of a feasibility study a little bit two weeks ago. Thanks for your patience. Dr. Hiltz and I have been working with First Consulting, and Colton Graham is up there on the screen, and he's here to join us from First Consulting. And the next five slides, he developed, and he shared them with us a couple of weeks ago, and we've had some questions, and we've made them a little bit better, and he's helping us understand the complexities and some of the questions that you have. And how about if I turn it over to you, Colton, and you take the next five slides? You gotta unmute.
There we go.
We can hear you.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Bob. Okay, I'm Colton Graham. I'm from First Consulting, also sometimes I wear the hat of First Planning Solutions is also my team. I'm the director of routing consulting, and I've been involved with school transportation at Wausau School District for almost thirty years now. I was with Laylaw before First Student and have continued, I've been in the routing division the entire time, so it's kind of nice to work with you folks. Anyway, so what did we do in support of this initiative, and then, you know, as importantly, what didn't we do? So before I kind of get into the data, I did want to kind of talk about that. So what we did is we took the current routing system that we use there in Wausau to manage the student assignments, the bus routing and the student assignments for the routes and so forth, and the school attendance, boundaries, walk boundaries, all that sort of thing. And we basically did a mock-up of the student transition in this plan. So we essentially moved all the students to their appropriate mock building or new building. We moved all the fifth graders into the middle schools, we moved all the eighth graders into the high schools, we split the two high schools, and so forth. And then, since we have all of the boundaries for, you know, walking and end hazard, metro service, all those kinds of things, at that point then, we could determine like how many eligible students are in the new configuration and at which schools and so forth, how many are in the metro zones now? So what we basically did is we did a, we did a student count analysis of where they've landed under this new plan. Now, what we didn't do is we didn't build actual bus routes, you know, looking at twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that's a, that's a whole nother, you know, level of effort, if you will, and it's so far out, you know, that there's a lot of decisions to be made and so forth between now and then, so. So I want to make it clear kind of what we had done. So looking at, looking at the data and all the student moves, we estimate that the number of increased buses is somewhere between five and ten, and I know it's a big range and things, but, you know, there's, there's a number of factors and things that are going to, you know, influence that. But, you know, for now, you know, the idea behind that is there are increased eligible riders. At the elementary schools, the schools that remain open get more riders, the schools you've closed, obviously, have no riders. The total's kind of a wash, but the individual schools that stay open have to go a little farther and so forth, so there's, there's a little more challenge to transportation there. Not a lot, I think that the elementaries are going to relatively be a wash. At the middle school, you know, you're sending one grade out and pulling one grade in, that really seemed to come out pretty much a wash. The high schools, the biggest challenge you're going to have with the grade-based configuration is now you have all the eighth and ninth graders over on the West Side trying to get to the East Side. You really don't have that many tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders that are outside of the walk and the metro zones and everything on the East Side that need busing, not nearly as many as you do requiring going west to east. So this district-wide busing is going to increase the time for your high school route, so that's, you know, that's the other factor that it's, you know, what do you do about your bell schedule and some things like that? You know, you are going to have more difficulty getting, completing the secondary route, and then also doing your elementary because the secondary routes are going to be longer, right? Because we're going to have to collect those kids from east to west, from west to east before we can depart, you know, in the afternoons. And then, you know, 4K, if we go to two buildings for 4K and they don't also have other elementary school kids, are the 4K going to get their own trips? Or do we ride them with elementaries and then take them to the 4K at the end? Do we give the 4K a different bell schedule? There's all kinds of questions around that that can result in these things kind of folding in and really not resulting in a lot of net increase, or some decisions, you know, could result in a significant increase. So there's, there's lots of levers, and that's kind of the next bullet, and I think described him, you know, bell schedules, how you handle 4K. The shuttles, I don't think the shuttles, you know, the idea of shuttling these high school kids from east to west and west to east, there's not as many of them, I don't think, as you might think, and the percentage of riders is not really high either, so I, and you already have some buses that are doing that. So I'm not certain, you know, and it's really at the end of their route, right? You know, like, you know, we have several buses coming into west, well, at the end of their route, three of them will go to east, and the kids will just jump on, so it's not really like a separate route or something, it's just a tag. Anyway, so one of the concerns was with this, you know, getting from east to west, west to east, what's our ride times going to look like? And what we did is we looked at the current high school routes, and we assumed essentially it's going to be, it could be, right? One configuration could be that the routes don't really change that much, they just pick up everyone eight through twelve, go to west, for example, and then the kids that need to go to east hop a shuttle. So really, the extended ride time is getting from west to east or east to west, not from first stop, you know, to your main high school. That essentially is not going to change. So what we looked at was, what are those ride times? And then if we add getting to the other school, which we assume at about nineteen to twenty minutes, what's that farthest student's ride time? And we did find there's a few kids that are going to be right around eighty minutes under, using the current route structure, right? Which obviously we would do what we can to mitigate that, you know, through rerouting and so forth anyway. It was only forty-seven students that would have greater than sixty minutes, because if you really think about it, it's just really the farthest kids away, and it's really only the eighth and ninth graders far away on the west, and only the ten, eleven, twelfth graders far away on the east. Everyone else is staying on their side, if you will, so. So let's see, shuttles, we estimate, you know, just based on student counts, and I think I kind of said this, a couple of shuttles going east to west and five to six going west to east. One interesting point is you do have two metro zones for your middle school students, and you would end up with ninety-two fifth grade students under this plan who would fall into the current metro service areas. And would, you know, if we kind of follow the middle school plan, they would receive metro service, which would be a new thing. Next slide, please. So what we did is, this is just a graphic of the, of those farthest routes of the kind of ride time analysis that we did. So you can see, these are current routes, so Route nine is going to east currently, so it's fifty-seven minutes, it's going to be about seventy-six minutes to get to west, so forth, Route thirteen, fifty-two, and seventy-one, and so on and so forth. Route forty-three shows just under seventy minutes to get to east, and then it would be about eighty-eight to get to west. I kind of have a feeling there's maybe some directional changes we could make to that route to shorten it a little bit, but what we did find though is that there's actually no student that has to ride that far, because the first student getting on that route isn't going to west. So, and that's the trick too, is if the kid getting on that first stop is going to east, they're not going to experience that long ride anyway. So what we did find is in this group of four routes, which are the longest current routes serving east, we had, you know, this breakdown, fifty to sixty minutes, we had sixteen students, sixty-one to seventy, twenty-three students, seventy-one to eighty-two students, we didn't have anybody over eighty minutes. Next slide, please. Same thing, looking over on the West Side, in fact, those routes are a little bit shorter in general. We had, you know, ten students in the fifty to sixty, seventeen in that seventy, eighty, nobody over eighty. And again, you know, looking back at the executive summary, forty-seven total students showed as being over sixty. Next slide, please. Okay, now this is an interesting thing that you're going to have to consider and address is, right now, if you look at the graphic on the left-hand side, we're showing the walk zones, current walk zones, so west high school walk zone, east high school walk zone, and then those other boundaries are the current metro pass areas for the high schools. So the problem now though, under this plan, is you're going to have east high school eighth and ninth graders living in the west high school walk zone. So if we were to give them yellow bus service, that would, you know, that would be very, that would be a lot. I'll just say, there's a lot of students in those areas. So what we did is we talked to Bob and Keith about, is let's count these kids, and we will assume that we're going to have to have some sort of metro service. So this would be new service, right? So this would be service picking up kids on the West Side in the, basically in the west walk zone, taking them to east high school and vice versa. So there's, you know, a number of kids in there, we called that the extended, so we called the west high school walk zone the extended east metro, or the extended west metro area for eighth and ninth graders, two hundred and twenty-two kids live in that area, and the west, or east metro area, tenth and twelfth graders, one hundred and thirty-one kids in those areas. So it's not insignificant. So next slide, please, this will be the last slide, and then we can have questions. So, can you go back just one? There. So, oh, I'm sorry, forward one, there we go. Sorry. So this is a, this is a breakdown of all those little, those little zones, so I know it's a little bit complicated, but, so the yellow ones are the current zones. So, so the current count of one hundred and thirty-two west kids in the west metro zone. So the counts in blue would be new, right? So those are west kids in the east metro south zone, west kids in the east metro north zone. And then the ones in the new metro, those kids actually would have been walkers if they'd gone to east, but now they're too far from west, so they get metro or they get yellow service, one or the other. The interesting thing, I don't have it on this slide, but I did go in and look at how many kids today live in those metro areas with it being divided, right? Because everybody who lives in the west walk zone attends west and is a walker, so there's no service. everybody who lives in the west walk zone attends west and is a walker. So there's no service out of those areas. And it was actually, it's actually significant. There's about 800, about 900 kids who live in those metro service areas and grades nine through 12, well, grades nine through 12 and the six through, basically six through 12. You know, in those metro areas, about 900 kids. Under this plan, there would be about 1,300, a little over 1,300 kids in those areas. So it's, it's almost a 50% increase in who could receive metro service. Now, I don't know, you know, exactly how many get a pass, you know, versus how many could get a pass, what those numbers break down to. But that, that, that could be significant. And really what it is, is it's kids who, who would have walked to the high school before and now need some sort of service. And so our assumption is, is metro would be the most reasonable. I, I think that's, that's about all I had. What, what sort of questions do we have?
I have a question. When you reference 47 students who would have a ride of longer than 60 minutes, is that 47 eligible students or 47 actual riders?
Those are 47 students who live in, in those rural areas who are eligible, then, yes.
Do you know, and I know this is all, it's, it's hard to say because you're basing it on today's students and who knows three years from now, but do you have any statistics or do you know what our percentage of actual riders are versus eligible riders? Because a lot of students that are eligible, they don't use the bus.
Yeah, I, I did go in and look at your current, your current routing data and, you know, just looking at the kids who are assigned the bus and eligible versus who are eligible but not assigned to the bus. It looked like about, at the eighth through 12 level, it's about 44%. About 54%, five through seven, and then about 60% K through four.
And then maybe the harder question, so you know, 44%, that's based on assigned to a bus. Maybe you don't know this one, but the harder question then is how many of them are actual regular users? Because a lot of parents will assign their students to a bus and then rarely use it, but they have it just in case their normal plan doesn't work. Do you have any way to, or do you know what sort of actual use there is? So we're taking, we're down, you know, we got 44% versus the number you said before. And now what about actual riders that regularly use it?
That are counted on a daily basis? Yeah, I, I would have to get with the operations manager and see what sort of actual counting, you know, because that's what it comes down to, either some sort of student tracking, you know, through GPS type stuff or, or drivers just literally counting how many kids get on.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm just trying to wrap my mind around, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to make estimates based on students this year, which already kind of puts us in a little bit of a bind. But I'm trying to just wrap my mind around actual riders as opposed to eligible riders or riders assigned to a bus, but they don't actually use it, you know, the actual riders themselves. But if it's, if, if it's not something you have currently, that's okay. I just wondered if you knew offhand.
Yeah, not, not something I, I have at hand. In my discussions with Scott Anderson, our operations manager there, I mean, I think they manage these riders fairly closely, but it may be what you're saying. They may sign up, but maybe, you know, did we ever reconcile whether they ever showed up or not, you know?
Lance, I know that to be the case in many of the schools. A lot of people sign up for the bus and then find other means of travel, whether it's at the high school level and they're driving themselves or they get a high school driver along the way and they're taking their middle school brothers and sisters, you know, to, to school. And then at the elementary level, people that sign up for it and, and don't use it.
After-school activities has a lot to do with that. Every intention to ride the bus, but today I have practice, I have a game, and I bring my little brother with me and things like that.
I think also Lance, a lot of parents assign a bus for their student just for a backup plan. If they, for whatever reason, someday can't get their student to or from school and they don't actually use the service. So that's, I do think that's valuable information as well, Lance, for that very reason.
And, and that's not, not of course to suggest that, that, that those riders aren't to be considered as well because having a backup plan is important. I just think it's important to know somebody uses the bus once a year versus somebody who's on the bus every single day. It makes a difference.
Of course.
I'm just, I'm just curious, these, the map that we have here, the extended metro areas indicates walk areas for east and west metro, whatever. With the, with the change, we've always looked at the river as being a dividing line. Is there a possibility of changing the walk areas? Because it appears that there are some that are on the east side that are closer to west than they are to east and vice versa.
The only time the walk is referenced is current, right? So if you look at current, you've got the west side walk area, which is technically served by metro, but we don't give students passes because it's the west walk area. If we restructure, as we've been talking about, there would be no reference to walk because, excuse me, they would still walk to the senior high, but they would get a metro ride to the junior high. Does that make sense? And also, we use the term walk area a lot. Sometimes we prefer parent transport. We're not necessarily saying they're all walking. Some of those students might be 1.5 miles. They might be getting parent transport. They might be riding on their own. Some of them get metro rides and pay for them on their own too. So sometimes that word walk area is a misnomer. Does that make sense? Where the left side is the current and the right side is the proposed? Did I capture that accurately, Colton?
Um, yeah, I mean, and, and like you said, the, the, the west high school kids would still not receive metro service or anything, same, same as on the east. If you attend west and are in that area, you would still be a walker per se. It's, it's the kids across the river. Now, now the point about can the walk zone extend across the river? I mean, you know, right now I believe that the, the walk policy is two miles, right? So it would really be a matter of, you know, I, how far across the river does two miles go? And then I'm sure that you've always considered that a hazard, hazardous barrier, you know, in the past, so.
Haven't had to think about it before.
Never really had to consider that, but it's a bridge.
Bob, what do we pay metro annually?
Per ticket used?
What's our, what's our outlay each year approximately?
I'm not gonna offer an answer because it'll be wrong unless Noel offers one, 95 cents a ticket.
Your, your wingman bailed on you. He's gone. All right, can you send that?
A good way to scale it is 95 cents a ticket. So if you think of it that way, what Colton was suggesting before, if you have 353 additional students, $353 a day for one way, $700 a day, both ways, 175. Not all of them get used. All of these students, some of them are eligible, but they don't even want metro ride tickets. Sometimes we give them metro ride tickets because of practice, things, they don't use them. So $100,000, let's say.
Okay, thank you. See, you did give an answer.
But he warned you that it's off top of his head.
Along the way, so.
So can I ask a question then about that? Because it sounds like, if I understood this correctly, that the increase in students then who, current, we're at 900 that maybe are eligible for that metro service? And with this change, we would move to 1,300 that are then in metro service? Is that correct?
Approximately.
So an increase of 400 students who at least would be eligible for metro, not necessarily using, but within those walk zones that need to get from their east walk zone now to the west campus?
Most of them. Some of them would be fifth graders.
Okay.
Right. There are a few fifth graders that would also get metro tickets to the middle school.
The, the total number of middle school metro didn't really change because the eighth graders went out. I mean, the added fifth graders just replaced the eighth graders.
Good point.
Any other questions, board members? Or anything else to add?
No, thank you, Colton, for being available for us tonight.
No, you're welcome. The only thing I, I would leave you with is, is really, I, I think the two, you know, the big pinch point here for is gonna be this extended ride for high school students. And, and really the PM is gonna be your tougher time. You know, I mean, you can, you can do things in the morning, drop this off a little early, you know, to get your shuttle. It's, any bus over at west that's gonna have an east kid is gonna have to wait for them. Right? And then that's gonna make it hard to get to your elementary school. And so what you do with the bell times and then, you know, once we see who these kids are, maybe you require them to register. You know, especially the ones that are trying to go east to west and west to east so that we know who they are because we might have to hook up some direct ride home for some of them in the afternoon to avoid all the buses at west, for example, waiting, you know, for, you know, if they have one kid from east and they have to wait, you know, you know what I mean? That could really be challenging. So, so that, that's the one thing. And then, and then the other one, and I know we haven't talked a lot about it, is the, how the elementary functions, you know, with the 4K. Today 4K just kind of rolls into the elementary and then it's kind of an individual tier in the, in the PM. But you know, with separate buildings and then serving half at the district, you know, how, how, how does that work? You know, what are their bell times? Do they still roll into elementary? You know, those are, I think, where your cost increases are gonna, are gonna be. So.
I think it's also important to understand this is a feasibility study, not a full-on routing plan. And sometimes the phrase proof of concept comes to mind too. We're, we're getting closer to understanding, can this be done? Yes, it can. Here are the limitations. Here are the things that are gonna be the pros. Here are the things that are gonna be cons. And we can continue to work through them because a lot more detail obviously has to be developed. But from a proof of concept perspective, the work that First Consulting did makes it look like this is possible, especially if we're flexible on some things like bell times and shuttles and fifth graders on metro and things like that.
As I say, the shuttles piece of it is one where, I mean, we've got an email sent in our board inbox, you know, where my student isn't gonna ride the bus from my house to west and then over to east. I'm going to drive them there to the shuttle so that they're only on a shuttle for 10 to 15 minutes heading to east. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of that that will, you know, would transpire.
And that would be possible with the plan like this, correct? Where if you're already driving one of your older students to the senior high campus, you could bring your younger student who needs to get to the junior high campus, drop them off and have them just ride the, the shuttle from the west campus to the east, right? That would be an option. Okay.
Absolutely.
Including walking to west to get on the east shuttle if you live close by or walking to west to get on the west shuttle.
In fact, you could, you could, in theory, you, it, it could be a lot of kids, you'd figure it out, but you could make the whole west walk zone that you have to walk to west to catch the shuttle and not give metro service, right? It's essentially what they have to do now.
Oh, like you said, Bob, there, when you say walk, many of them are being dropped off.
Yeah. It means you don't get yellow bus service.
Yeah. Or because they're in high school, they may be riding with somebody else or driving themselves. There's lots of.
And it's, it's important to note, that's already what's happening right now. So that's not a change. That's what's already currently happening for those students. So.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
One of the things, you know, just, and, and then these decisions are these levers, you know, one, one of these I would leave you with too is I think there's decisions you can make that really can mitigate any cost increase. Maybe even make it a walk, you know, potentially. They weigh, yeah, a long time, but you, you know what I'm saying? I mean, there's, there's decisions that, that can be made, I think, that can, can, can really mitigate any cost increase or really limit.
Thank you, Colton.
Thank you.
Good to hear from you again. Thanks, Colton. You gonna stick with us and watch the rest of the activity here? You're welcome to do so.
Absolutely.
All right. Last slide. Diana, do you want to introduce this and then take last agenda item if you're okay with it?
Good evening, board members. You probably saw this photo sprinkled throughout the presentation, but on this last slide, what I'd like to do is just spend a couple of minutes giving you a little bit of the backstory to this. And last week was National FFA Week and as part of that, we put together a video that's on our social media and that we'll share with you in just a bit. But I was, as I was looking through the photos and videos that we have, I came across this one in particular and it, it kind of made me stop for a second. And you're probably wondering why that photo. In that photo is members of the Wassa East and Wassa West FFA, both the students and their advisors, teachers. And they don't call themselves the Wassa West FFA and the Wassa East Wassa, Wassa East FFA. They're the Wassa FFA. And every year they do so many amazing things together. And one of them is actually Food for America, which is a big portion of the video you'll see in a minute. But what's really cool about that is every fall, they educate every single fourth grader in the Wassa School District. And that's not just our public schools, that's our private schools too. And, and in October of last fall, the weather was not so great. And there were more smiles on the students' faces, both the FFA students and then the students out there learning than I've seen. And it was incredible. So just wanted to wrap up that they do amazing things and it could kind of make us pause and go, what are the possibilities for not just our FFA students, but any other club and organization that we have?
Thank you, Diana. And with that, if we can go to the last agenda item, we can, you want to introduce this video then?
Yeah, so, yeah, National FFA Week was last week and really we wanted to take an opportunity to highlight FFA and the impact they have, not just on our district, but in the community. So we put together just a little synopsis of some of the things they do. And not everything is in here. They also raise money for Rob Hughes's Turkey Drive. They do lots of incredible things every year. So with that, we'll go ahead and play this. And each one of the stations that you see is led for the most part by the students. The agriculture instructors also help. They had a lot of fun. This video in particular was at the NTC Center of Excellence for Agriculture. And the students also got ice cream, which they were really excited about. And in just a second, there's two photos of the entire group of FFA students in there. So if you get an opportunity this fall, it's a great event to check out.
Thank you, Diana. Could you, it was on.
Thank you, Diana. Could you, uh, as long as we're talking about, um, you know, these videos and such, you, uh, you shared with us that these kinds of videos and things have gotten some extra traffic on social media. Could you update the board quickly?
For the first time in, at least since I've been there, our Facebook posts are now reaching about 83,500 people, um, which is pretty incredible. And our goal is to maybe hit 90,000 by the end of this week. Um, but we just shared a lot of celebratory pieces of information, great things our students are doing, our staff are doing, and, and people love to see that. So we're going to keep that up and, and videos help tremendously. Um, so we're going to keep those, keep those coming.
Yep. Thanks for all your work. Thanks for sharing that. We would like to bring more of these things to the board and to the community so they can see all the things our staff and students are doing. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have a special meeting. Um, and it's a very quick item. So I think we can go right into it without a break if that's okay with everybody. Okay. I will call the February 27th, 2023 special meeting to order. And our first item of business is to approve the consent agenda, which may include appointments, separations, leaves of absence and retirements. I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we were set up to do a closed session tonight. Are we delaying that or are we going forward with that?
Um, I think it would be nice to have all the board members here for that.
Okay. I don't assume we have any objections to going home early. None. Good. Okay. So I then will seek a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.